Anyone gets up to speak?
Oh. I completely forgot about the last meeting. There's still no pro-lude because of the special meetings I saw. I was very grateful they were on YouTube.
That's when you made it from the bridge all the way back here, huh?
Yeah, I was on my bike.
Yeah, yeah. You're echoing a little bit, definitely.
What's that?
A little bit of echo in the background.
I have another bridge picture. But it's a different bridge, so just leave it alone.
Okay, everybody ready? Ready. We're gonna call this meeting at the Winter City Council via Zoom to order at 6:30 PM. Tracy, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Lauren?
Here.
Councilmember New?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Here.
Mayor Callan?
Here. Pierre, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Certainly. The pledge allegiance is to the flag, the country, and the citizens of America.
So, Mr. President, I would like to ask you to stand.
My change is...
I would like to introduce you and Justice Brown.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the adjournment. John, I think we have just one change to the adjournment.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, our staff will be just requesting that I have even the consent calendar be deleted. We'll put that back for the next meeting.
Okay. If there's any other...
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember New and a second by Councilmember Lauren. Tracy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
Mayor Callan?
Hi. Okay, next is the council staff comments. And Councilmember Lauren, would you like to begin?
Sure. On April 22nd, I was part of the Winter Town Hall Zoom with the focus on getting ready to reopen. I also attended the Two by Two with the Winter's Joint Unified School District and Mayor Pro Tim Biase, Two by Two. On April 23rd, I participated in a pretty long Leading California Cities Board meeting on COVID-19. In the evening, I attended a Valley Community Energy Meeting. On April 29th, I participated in a webinar on Client Resilience and Microgrid Solutions with the Leading California Cities for the rural cities. And it was also with Schneider, a lecturer. I was really impressed with the idea of Microgrid Solutions for PSPS events. On May 4th, at 10:00 AM, I reviewed the agenda with City Manager John Don Lovey. I also had a Leading California Cities Board of Directors call with the Governor's Office and the OES on the opening of Stage 2 opening. Cal OES Officers Laura Mizura, Tita Curry, and Susan Spinelli of the Governor's Office talked about public health, public health concerns moving ahead on Stage 2, training 10,000 tracers and building that capacity. Some parts of Stage 2 open up possibly Friday and some will be a little bit later. Let's see, and later on that evening, I had a Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting and we discussed planning that festival de la comunidad and decided that we just wait for now and not make any decisions yet. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 22nd, I attended the Business Workshop. Council Chamber, I believe it was. And today, I opened the agenda with City Managers. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New?
This time around, the only meeting I had was with our City Manager this morning for to go over the agenda.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Mayor, on the 22nd, I also sat in on the Winter Business Roundtable with them. A lot of good ideas came out of our business leaders downtown. So, I'm looking at thinking of looking out here. Not sure whose idea was putting the table down and going apart, writing about the town. Ended on the 22nd of April, the Two by Two of the State District. Councilmember Lauren, we had a very long agenda. The impacts of the COVID-19 on the school district and... On the 21st, I think, I delivered the... On the 4th, yesterday, I was sitting down here for the agenda.
Okay, thank you. As for myself, on the 22nd, I also was on Town Hall. And it was a very productive meeting, I think, with a lot of good ideas. And then I also, on the same day, I was on a Zoom County Selection Committee meeting, which Mayor Pro Tim was also on. And I am now the Vice Chair of that committee. And we are rotating back on to LAPCO. So, I'm also the alternate for LAPCO for the next two years. And then on the 27th, I was on a Zoom meeting with the State Water Board. And it was about our favorite subject, Chrome 6, and how their current desire to lower the MCL to less than, less than one would bankrupt the city and raise everybody's water bill by 300%. So, we were pleading our case with them to, to not be so drastic with the MCL number. Then also on the, on the 30th, I was on a Zoom meeting with Assembly Member Cecilia Curry, which was mostly about COVID-19 and how everybody's dealing with that. And I also brought up the Chrome 6 issue with her and the need to, the need to kill that before it bankrupts her hometown. And then yesterday, I was on a Zoom meeting with Senator Dodd, where there was lots of talk about the financial effects of COVID-19 on cities and the counties. And then, of course, I gave him my two cents on opening up Lake Perriessa as well as the Chrome 6 issue. And then I also met with the City Manager to discuss the agenda and budget concerns, actually more than once this week. And then I've also been continuing to help out almost every week with the food deliveries to the Morgan Street senior apartments. And that's all I have. Thank you, everybody, for all your participation and work on all the committees and the meetings. And we will move on to the public comment. If there's anyone that would like to raise your hand and comment on any items which are not on tonight's agenda. John, do we have anybody?
Yeah, Mayor Callan, I showed that Kate Ladish has raised her hand. And Kate, hold this one sec, I'll be right there. I will unmute you. Okay, go ahead, Kate. All right, Kate.
Your pick. Thanks, Kate Ladish, 400 Morgan Street, Number 21. And given that address, I would like to start by thanking everybody who's been delivering food for the food bank, including to this building. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff or council or whoever it was who decided to move the consent item, Agenda E, about the Automated License Plate Reader to a discussion item, to my understanding, for the May 19th meeting instead of having it on the consent calendar for this week. I think especially given, given that it's a tool of worthless master surveillance and given the framework posed by SB 34, that there'd be public meetings and a posted policy about it. I think it's, it's an excellent idea that that's been moved to a discussion item in a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to an item not on tonight's agenda? John or Tracy, do we have any other hands up?
Uh, I, uh, just may I not show anybody?
Okay. All right, then we will move on to the consent calendar. John?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a couple of items. Item A are minutes from the regular meeting on April 21st. Item B is a proclamation celebrating May 2020 as Elder Americans Month. So, I don't know what old is, but I know that over the years, recent years, we've been doing the Elder Day and those items. Item C is a proclamation recognizing May 7th as the big day of giving. For those who haven't given enough today, because today was Giving Tuesday, you can pick up what you didn't give today on Thursday with the Big Day of Giving. Item D is basically the resolution declaring weeds and rubbish on lots as a fire hazard. This is the initial resolution. It triggers the noticing that goes out to all the property owners. Gives them a chance to get rid of weeds. And for actual abatement on things, it'll come back to you probably sometime in June. And Item E is on the consent calendar. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does the council have any questions? Or is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or anything to say about the consent calendar?
May I ask a question?
Okay, seeing that, we will entertain a motion.
I'll just take a second. With the changes for moving Item D.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Councilmember New. Tracy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Wait, wait. Let me get back to Tracy after I unmute her. All right, go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
Mayor Callan?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have no presentations tonight. So, the next item is our first discussion item, which is the Housing Element Consultant Recommendation. And I believe, John, you're introducing this one?
This will be me. And Mayor and Council. So, in, in February, the council authorized staff to do a request for proposal regarding the preparation of our housing element.
If you want to ask a question, I just...
We went through the process.
I don't know where to go to raise my hand, so...
We got to the first page. And quite frankly, it became very evident that we needed to send out more information to some of the prospective proposers on the housing element. We did that, we extended the period out just a little bit, about two and a half weeks for them to kind of revise, raise proposals. We received four. And there was quite a spread in the proposals, but we interviewed all four firms. All four very qualified folks. At the end of it, staff is recommending the DeNova Planning Group. DeNova was both extremely well qualified, but also they were the lowest proposal, cost proposal that came in. We know DeNova. They have done projects for us, including the Blue Mountain Terrace, LIPA work that they did. They've been doing work regarding the Walmart 10, Negative Declaration. And DeNova is also the author of our 2013 housing element, which we will get a, a eight-year approval on it. So, staff is recommending, council approves the agreement with DeNova. And we will move forward.
Okay, thank you, John. Is there anybody on the council that has questions for John? I see Bill's hand up. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. John, the triple will have, they're only planning to use the area in the city limits and not the area in the area that's... Is that correct?
Additionally, what, what we advertise for is... The advertisement covers the entire general plan area. But one of the things in this housing element that's, that's really important is State HCD is requiring that all housing elements have to do site identification. So, at the end of the day, the properties and the housing element will reflect the cities, the properties that are within the city that are capable of being developed within the planning period.
Okay, go ahead.
I have one more question. Is it fair to say that because we had to make an extended plan, that maybe it costs more money due to that?
No, I, not really. At the end of the day, I can tell you that the staff, we've already done quite a bit of extensive work on. One of the big things is site identification, going through, looking at all the properties, looking at all the zoning and all that. We actually already have a ton of that work done. So, I don't think that was really a determinant on some of the pricing. I think the reality is, is that the two groups that submitted the lower-cost proposals are both extremely familiar with the study already. DeNova is already doing work here. ASCENT recently did the action plan for our Planet Action Plan. So, I think at the end of it, it really came down to overall familiarity with the study. So, I, I think that was probably the most determining factor. Thank you.
Okay, did anybody else have any questions for John? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask any questions about this item? We see any hands, John?
Uh, no hands.
Okay. With that, if there's no further discussion, we'd entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Housing Element Consultant.
Make a motion. I note that with the City Council, through the agreement with the DeNova Planning Group, we are now not to exceed $45,200,000 for development under six-inch tall housing elements or city limits.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Biase and a second by Councilmember Lauren. And Tracy, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
And Mayor Callan?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the second item, City Council Liaison Assignments. John, I'll go ahead and kind of take off on this one. Every time we have an election and do some changes, we, we always review our City Council Liaison Assignments, all the other committees we sit on, stuff like that. And I did, over the course of the last week, have discussions with each of the council members individually to review what they were on and if there was any changes they wanted to make. The items that are highlight, highlighted are the only items that were changed. The Yolo County Homeless and Prevention Action Coalition. Pierre and Councilmember New and I switched between primary and alternate because of the way that falls with another committee. And then the Oversight Board, we're no longer on that. So, that's been removed for Harold. And the Planning Selection Committee, that just changed. Right now, it's Jesse and myself and Phil's the alternate. And then on the Yolo Leaders, Jesse had that one before, and that's been switched to myself. And Jesse is an alternate by her request. And that's pretty much it. Everything else stayed the way it already exists. If anybody has any comments or concerns, go ahead. Harold?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify on LAPCO. This shows you as the primary set.
Yeah, that's, that's from the last time that I was on LAPCO. It just, we've been off of LAPCO the last two years because the cities rotate. And we just came back on. So, you're correct, I'm now the alternate and it'll go back to a primary in two years because that's the way LAPCO sets it up. And some of these other committees, like the Planning Commission Selection Committee and the, what else was I thinking of? The Senior Commission, things like that, where we do interviews and stuff. We typically review those at a council meeting prior to any new selections. And we sometimes make changes to who's doing that. Like Bill and I did the Planning Commission two times ago. But then this last time, it was Councilmember Lauren and myself. So, we typically look at those again each time they come up because they're not something that is, you know, is a constant meeting on a regular basis.
Right.
So, for two years, we'll just be an alternate on LAPCO. And then we go back to a board position in two years. And we can discuss then, you know, who will be on it.
All righty. Yeah, because I was a little unsure about how that was going. So, it's not going to happen until two years.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I just wanted to thank, I just wanted to thank Mayor Wade Callan for being really thorough about going through the list. And, you know, we've had some new things added to our list that, like the community, the Yolo Community Foundation. So, it was really nice to be able to ship, kind of ship things around and for me, give away some things. So, just wanted to say thank you for being really thorough and showing some really strong leadership on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the council have a, a comment on the assignments? Or is there anybody from the audience that would like to comment? John, is there any hands?
Mayor, no, I don't see any hands.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote on this. This is just informational, correct?
Either or. If, if you want to just do a motion of the committee assignments for 2020, 2021, that might make it official.
Okay, we can do that. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll note to approve the committee assignments as presented tonight.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Councilmember New. Tracy, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
And Mayor Callan?
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Okay, our, our last discussion item tonight is the Budget Workshop. This should be fun. John, Shelley?
Yeah, let me unmute Shelley. She was making noise. Shelley, I'll go ahead and start off and it'll turn it over to you. Mayor and Council, what I'd like to do is maybe just kind of introduce our first budget workshop to say that this budget is probably one of the most onerous ones that we've ever put together. It's quite frankly, an understatement. We live in an absolutely incredible time right now. And the reality is that, that the COVID-19 pandemic, the actions, literally the unprecedented actions of state, federal agencies have literally caused so much to happen in the financial situations for not only private businesses, but also for city governments. So, what I'd like to do, if I can, is I'll turn this over to Shelley and let her go. But I'd like to kind of give you some of the direction that we have been working under to, to really put together the overall budget. There are seven key points. First is, we are expecting a very prolonged recession. The last real monumental event that we had was in 2008. And a lot of the issues that we dealt with in, in 2008 don't even exist today because the ability, if you remember in '08, they threw about a trillion dollars at it. So far, I think that the government's put somewhere in the ballpark probably somewhere around $2 trillion thus far. But we are expecting that we will be entering in a pretty significant recession. One of the things that helped us get out of 2008 was we were smack in the middle of renovation of our downtown. And we had tools at that time. We had redevelopment, we had some funds to be able to help bring the winter's economy out of that. We have none of those tools today. We're looking to preserve critical services. People count on us and almost three-quarters of the money that we spend in our city's general plan goes towards police, fire, and keeping people safe. So, our approach has been to do our best to preserve those services. The city's organization is going to have to be downsized considerably. And we are looking at doing that through attrition from retirements to downsize. Shelley will explain that. We're also looking at our payroll reduction. Shelley will talk a little bit about why payroll is, is important. One of the biggest concerns that staff has is our need for the preservation of our reserves and our cash balances. People are often pretty impressed when, when they see the overall percentage of reserves that we carry, that the reason why we do that is because we need our cash reserves to basically carry the city for seven months of each fiscal year, the first seven months. We've included a contingency for potential future litigation. And we've come up with an incremental funding scheme through the establishment of a reserve fund. through the establishment of a reserve fund. But at the end of the day, it's really simple. As we look to preserve cash, as we look to provide contingencies about a lot of things, it's really simple. At this point, we're looking to do our best to avoid bankruptcy. And I don't think the city has ever been closer to that, given our overall cash situation. So with that, why don't I turn this over to Shelley to maybe go through the budget? All right, Shelley. Okay, Shelley, you're there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I wanted to start with the budget projection progression so that you can see how we kind of work our way through the process. So I started with budget revenue and expenditures with full MOU implementation based on what our MOU is saying right now. And then I worked to say, well, let's free wages at their current rate and not do any pay increases. And then I said, well, that's not going to get us very far. So let's look at a profit and reduction in pay across the board. It was better, but not great. And then I started talking to our consultants with HDL, with property tax and sales tax. I had conversations with the hotel here in town. Plus, I talked with the developers, the hotel on the freeway. I talked to all the developers to figure out where they thought they were going to be as far as pulling building permits. And that allowed me to make some adjustments to the overall revenue sources. And at the same time, I went back to several of the general fund departments and said, you guys have to cut. You have to make some severe cuts because we're just not there. And so police, fire, the building department, everybody went back through their budgets. I went through judges. And so right now, our budget is balanced with asking when, and we haven't got agreements yet, but we're asking employees to take the five percent reduction in pay and not have any coworkers or merit increases in the 2021 fiscal year. Police and fire have taken the habit to their departments' operations and maintenance budgets. And so, before we move on to all of these expenditures, let's move to the next slide and look at what our budget revenues look like. So the budget next year is about 5.3, almost 5.4 million dollars in revenues. Our taxes are $4 million of that. That includes property taxes, all the variations of property taxes to see how it comes in in various parts. It includes purchase charges, rent and interest, building remesse licenses, grants, and then other revenues. And I kind of itemized the other revenues as a file of the page so you can see what makes up those other revenues. We get a payment from the fire district. We get 97.5% of all revenues that the fire district brings in. We get a $250,000 administration fee from the separate agency, which is the bulk of the other revenues. And then you have the 457 match that the city's employees contribute back to the general fund. And then we just have various other little things here and there of about 44,500 that, that's just a lot of little things that add up. So in total, our revenues are almost 5.4 million dollars, not quite. So then we can move on to the next slide and we'll discuss the expenditures. And I listed the expenditures by department. So we've got the city council, we've got the renovation costs, the city clerk, the city manager, admin HR, finance, police, fire, planning, building, public works, recreation, community center, and school. So as you can see, even with the reduction in expenditures by police and fire, there's still 75% of our general fund. We've also reduced costs in recreation and community center and the pool by assuming that there will be no recreation services offered in the 2021 fiscal year, that the community center will be closed, and that the pool will be closed. And those three items, the assumptions are based on what we're hearing from Governor Newsom, and those items will be included in May for a reopening, which means they probably won't be happening until after the first calendar year of 2021. And so we wouldn't be able to provide any services. But yet, we still have to, for like the pool, we keep chemicals in it. We have to keep the water maintained. We have to keep it heated. We have to keep the pool maintained so that we don't damage the structure of the pool and that it's ready to be used next year. The community center, the same thing. We have to maintain it so it doesn't deteriorate because we, you know, you don't want to turn off the heat and cooling and then have things start getting damaged because it doesn't have proper climate control. So the bottom three items on this are things that we just don't think are going to happen because we don't think the governor's going to let them happen. And so that's how I got to this 5.4 million dollars in expenditures. So I wanted to talk a little bit about why the wages are such an important part of our budget in this slide, because the wages by department and the operating expenses by department. So on the left-hand side, I've listed the departments and the wages in the department and how many people are employed in that department. And as you can see down at the very bottom, it says employee cost as a percent of the total general fund expenditure. So the employee cost, which includes all the, all of the house insurance and all the pay, everything, taxes, everything, is 60, almost 63% of total general fund expenditure. And then on the right-hand side, it's the operating expenditures of the department. And so the operations, operating expenditures are about 37%. The wages are about 53%. And that's why we're having to go to the staff and ask them to make the concessions on the pay because it's a huge part of the general fund budget. And so, you know, we have a bare bones budget in all the other departments. If we have, police and fire basically remove all contingencies out of their budgets. So there's, you know, there's no contingency for if an engine blows up in one of the vehicles, whether it's a police vehicle or a fire vehicle. There's very little in there. We try to just say, what's our revenue maintenance? What do we have to do to keep the operators running? And as you can see, there's a lot of departments that have like no operating expenditures in their departments and how they balance almost nothing. So the next page shows the, how do we accomplish this change in expenditure? We started with this beginning expenditure projection of 6.3, almost 6.3 million dollars. We ended with a little over 5.4 million dollars. And I've shown in an itemization what the reduction was by department. So the first thing is, overall, we reduced employee pay in the general fund by $273,000. The police department removed $134,000 of operating and maintenance expenses. The police, the fire department removed $86,000. We saved $54,000 by closing the school. We saved $57,000 by closing the community center. $25,000 by canceling programs. Public works reduced their O and M. The building department reduced their O and M. Finance reduced theirs by 1,500, a little under 1,500. The city manager reduced by 1,500. City clerk by 7,000. We removed the city council. It's in the city council budget normally, but we reduced the contribution to the county library by 25,000. A reduction in the citywide investment transfer of 28,000. And a reduction in overhead allocation of almost $34,000. And that's how we got to our total reduction of 871,786 in expenditures for the proposed 2021 budget. And in addition to asking employees to take a pay cut, we also are not filling some positions. So you can see the red X. What you can't see is what's underneath them. So if you start at the left-hand side, we still leave the community development director position that we can't see. We also expect that Dave Dowkow will be retiring at the end of this fiscal year. We have had in the last year, a police commander position vesteded in the police department. We're removing that. We had a sergeant retire in February and we're not replacing him. We have the administrative coordinator of the police department who's planning on retiring at the end of the calendar year. We expected a retired unit to come in for the last half of this fiscal year to help cover that position. Carol, the environmental services manager, has retired. Will retire at the end of June. We're not filling that position. Dan Maguire is also retiring at the end of June and we're not filling that position. And our city clerk is intending to retire at the end of the calendar year and we're not going to fill that position. We will reorganize the work and print it out among existing staffs. So we're downsizing quite a bit from our current staff. And that also is part of how we manage to reduce the budget.
Hey, Tracy, why don't we stop just for a second? And why don't we see if there are any questions from the council? Let me make sure that I unmute everybody. All right. The council is now muted. So any questions from the council?
Councilmember New, go ahead. After looking at all the cuts that Shelley just told us about, and with 800 and something thousand, where's that put us as far as our budget goes? And we made that, we made a cut. What do we have left of the budget?
Well, I noticed, let me, I'll go back a couple of slides. At the end of it, we basically end up here. And with all the cuts that are anticipated, we end up here. It's about 5.4 million from this point. And, you know, quite honestly, we had expected it to spin more than the 6.2. So we, for the most part, except for moving some of the monies, when we started this exercise, well, basically on probably Monday morning, we had cut almost 1.2 million dollars out of the budget. But still, we have a debt of $31,000 deficit.
Well, I guess, I have more questions, but let's see if anybody else has questions about what Shelley just went over. Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi?
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions. We're talking now about doing a one-year budget when we normally do a two-year budget. I understand that because of our uncertainty within our revenues and joint banking because of COVID-19. That's clear. What happens? I know some of this is predicated on the litigation with the things that take this 5% test and we say, police and fire. And what happens if they don't agree with you?
Well, at the end of it, then we'll have to talk about other avenues. And the other avenues would be set for a loan or some type of layoffs.
The other question is, I know you mentioned in there about putting away some money for litigation.
Basically, it's a real simple proposal. We're putting together a contingency fund to try and fund towards about $1 million for potential litigation. We're looking to fund that over a 40-year period. And really, that's the only comment we have about it.
I asked this question this morning when I was talking with John. Where we think the litigation is going to be coming from? I mean, it seems like it's been planning for something that may never come about. And I don't see where the litigation would come from. And I think that we have to look into that much further. $250,000 a year for four years takes a lot away from the community for something that may never be needed. And I am a conservative person financially. And I understand putting away money when something, you know, it's like insurance. But have other jurisdictions, I mean, apparently this is going back to the North area and the, or the vote that Heat Winners Winners is working on. But have other jurisdictions that have had that kind of vote and passed it had problems with litigation? I don't, I don't see Heat Winners Winners suing the city. Who's going to be doing the suing?
Councilmember New, I think I'd probably get admonished by our city attorney about it. So to be able to talk about specifics, but the idea of funding contingencies has been a very sound practice for us. And if I go back just to the most foundational elements of the way that we're approaching the budget, we are including contingencies because one of the key things we're trying to avoid, or first off, is to position ourselves to preserve capital, our reserves, and our cash reserves. And that is an integral part of all of that. And the idea that we are putting together a contingency is just, it is a very routine practice that you would set some money aside. We aren't doing it. And once it fell smooth, we're looking to fund it over a multi-year period. And I, quite frankly, if I get yelled at by our city attorney, that the reality is, is I don't want to necessarily surmise where it might come from.
Okay, let me ask you another question. If you're building this fund over four years, is there a reason for the four years? What I'm thinking is, what if you put it off a year and then build it up over for four years? Do you think that it's going to be necessary in four years or five years or three years? Or why, why now? I mean, if we didn't have the COVID-19, if we didn't have the recession, all those things, why are we doing it right now? And what, you know, if we waited a year, we have a better idea of where the economy is going, whether it's going to be a long recession, a short recession, whether our business is downtown or coming back, those kinds of things. I just am somewhat uncomfortable making that kind of cut for something that may or may not, you know, I understand you want to be safe, but it might be necessary. But then again, we could put away a million dollars and find out that we don't have to use that. But then we have a million dollars in reserve, that's great. But over the four years, our community has suffered a great deal, and that's what I'm concerned about.
And with that question, councilmember Newt, but, you know, what you put off today only exacerbates some of the problems tomorrow. And in this case, we took what we thought was a moderate amount before the contingency. We'll move it over a couple of years. At the end of the day, it becomes a part of our reserves as a contingency. If we don't need it, great. But if we do need it, it's something that we will have planned for and we will have moved on it. If for some reason we don't think that we would need it, then absolutely the council can make a decision not to do that. But as far as we are looking at for all of this, again, we go back to the situation we're absolutely trying to avoid is if all of a sudden you start going down a path on various things, it could bankrupt us immediately. And that's why we are looking just as a contingency to fund. And in this case, it's not like we're doing it in one year. We're doing it over a period of time, which we potentially think it could be. And at the end of the day, if anything, it just puts money into the overall city reserves.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess what I'll say again is, while the money is going into the reserve, it's not serving the people of the community. So are we going to look at this every year before we say two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for four years? After the first year, can we say, well, there's no sign of needing it for litigation? We're going to still keep putting this money away? Or do we, is there some point when we know that we're going to need it? How do we know when we need it? That's what I guess what I'm going to ask.
Yeah, I, you know, the council considered on a year-by-year basis, absolutely year-by-year. And if we don't think that we're going to need it, we won't need it. And then you can stop doing it and relocate the money.
That's true. Councilman, or councilmember Anderson, you had a question earlier.
I guess anywhere, it's just, we can go over back a few pages. It was mentioned, like assessments, work with it or something. Steph, I don't remember.
Are you talking about from the slide presentation?
I think so, yes.
Okay, I think, are you talking about this page, kind of detailing the other revenues that we put together?
I think there was specific mention of assessments.
I think it might have been in the assessment, to transfer the, or establish.
Oh, I'm not sure what you're asking about. It's on how we, how the general fund budget reduction by department, where I show the eight hundred seventy one thousand. So you asked, you asked the reduction in the citywide assessment transfer?
Yes, that's.
So currently, this year, with all of the expenses from this year, we show that the general fund has to subsidize the citywide assessment by about a hundred and one thousand dollars this year. Next year, we're predicting a little bit more revenue because we have some new homes that are into the citywide assessment. This will provide more revenue. Plus, we've gone through and done some cost reductions. Instead of it being a hundred and one, it's like seventy, I'm just going to make too much noise. Like seventy three thousand dollars that we're going to spend more than what we get in the citywide assessment transfer. So I cut about twenty eight thousand dollars out of, I and Eric cut about twenty eight thousand dollars out of the citywide assessment budget. And so that means that twenty eight thousand dollars left, if it's general fund, has to subsidize the citywide assessment district. That's the part. Citywide assessment is the person landscaping. And so we've gone through and, you know, we've lowered some wages in there because we're asking every, all police citywide to take the five percent pay reduction. That includes, that includes the five percent reduction that applies to the staffing in the citywide assessment. We've also reduced operations and maintenance costs in there, taken out a couple of capital projects that maybe we can fund from another area. And so with all of that, we reduced the cost by twenty eight thousand dollars, which then that means we have twenty eight thousand dollars left that we have to transfer from general fund in the citywide assessment to get it to balance.
Okay, councilmember Lauren, did you have any questions?
I'm sorry. There she is.
Yay, I knew I was muted all that time, but just wanted to wait. Not so much of a question is, when I look at the police department O and M budget being cut as severely as it is, I don't want to be in a position where we can't process crimes or rape kits, anything that's, you know, that comes our way. I think that we should have something there. I don't know how to speak some money into that, but I think that that's too severe of a cut for police. So just a comment.
You know what, I think it'd be beneficial for maybe the chiefs to maybe get an overview of some of the things that they, as they approach their cuts and talk about. So if you don't mind, I think I'll put both the chiefs on the spot a little bit. Why don't I ask Chief Miller to maybe talk a little bit about the cuts in his department and some good things? And I'm trying desperately to unmute the chief. Okay, no unmuting, Chief Miller, as they're aware. Good, all right, chief, you're on.
We literally, like Shelley said, took a hatchet to the budget. Any item, any items taken, we assess it as predictable or was it just possible? Predictable would be such things as tires, brakes, oil changes. Obviously, major, either transmission repair, bodywork, anything like that, those are possible events. So we cut it down to basically oil, brakes, and tires and kind of cross that bridge if we do have a major repair on vehicles. Likewise, we honestly took a look at some of the, how to put possible crimes versus, you know, predictive. And we do, I heard a cover letter, I was trying to pull it up before I got unmuted there, where I even said, hey, police department's budget is basically budget for emergencies. Definition of emergency is a sudden, unexpected event. So when we approached our budget, we're like, hey, you know, it is possible that we may have a sexual assault in City of Winners. And we budget for what we call the sexual assault response team, or SHR exams, we call them, new rape kits. And we budget for two rape kits per year, each one's over thirty three hundred dollars apiece. Well, I mean, knock on wood, we have not had sexual assault in City of Winners in the last two fiscal years. So we said, okay, it is a possible, but not predictable type of event. So that was cut through the budget. And literally, item for item for item, all the way down. I mean, I can keep on going on, like I said, literally item by item of the thought processes. As Shelley also said, no hiring, so we cut out any type of background investigation costs, equipment costs, as I presented the city council report, just to hire an officer on the very first day takes ten thousand dollars, just to put him on the street on the very first day of their field training. So it's a very expensive process. And we are, not anticipating any attrition over this next year. It is a possibility, but it's, again, not currently on the, on our horizon. Kind of gives you a snapshot, like I said, without going item to item, but certainly if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer it.
Thank you, Chief Miller. Do we have Chief Lopez as well? Yeah, let me unmute him. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, like Chief Miller said, the fire department took the exact same approach, literally cutting every possibility or contingency over in our budget. And, you know, looking at that, our volunteer program is an instrumental role in the services we provide in our community, the critical component to maintain in the fire department. But it's balancing that too with the cost of doing that. We've cut tremendously in training, vehicle maintenance, and, you know, so we're just trying to help patch the gap that we're all going to see here in light of this COVID-19 and as much as we can help, you know, Shelley mute those critical numbers. It's tough, it's difficult. We're operating at a fair minimum and we hope, like Miller said, is, you know, you can't, emergencies you can't necessarily plan for. So that does make it difficult from the emergency side of things, is being able to anticipate what kind of emergencies we might have, the duration of those emergencies, and what kind of impacts is it going to have, you know, locally or within our budgets. So, yeah, if there's any questions I can ask or if you have anything specific, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Lopez? Okay, thank you, chief. Councilmember Lauren, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a comment, a comment and a question. The comment is that, you know, we had a really dry winter, not a wet winter, but we had it, you know, for a couple of years in a row. We have the early fire season, we have the long fire season. So as far as, you know, public safety and fire laws, I think that, you know, we, we need a robust budget. And then I just wanted to make that comment. And then the question that I have is, if we're not, if we're not running programs at pool, can we shift or recapture any insurance money if we shift the burden of insurance to the school district? If it's only the school district that's using it? And the same thing with the community center, if we're not using it in the same robust way that we normally would with lots of public events? Is there any, any possible recapturing of any funding from insurance? Those are my questions.
I'll go ahead and try and answer that. So let's talk about the pool. No matter what, at the end of the day, the city pays eighty percent of all the costs on the pool. And that is based on our contractual relationship with the school district. They use it, you know, officially, I think the swim season's like only two months out of the year. So the city, we, for our various programs, including the times that we don't use it, we have eighty percent, and that's just the contract. And the ability for us to shift that onto the school district, I don't think is there. As far as the, the community center goes, you know, one of the things that we can always consider is if we do have events that we feel to pay, if there's something that's rip and positive, yeah, we would probably look at those types of things. As far as shifting insurance on that, I can just tell you that our insurance is based on just property coverage and liability coverage. That's what we have, so there's not really any savings off of that. But, you know, one of the things about this, on one hand, you look at the pool and you think, gosh, you know, we should be opening the pool. Well, if you listen to the governor, the idea of mass gatherings, the idea of, you know, the idea of swimming pool is so far out in his projections for, for opening. It's just way out there. If phase one took three months, if phase two takes three months, if phase three takes three months, we are way into twenty twenty one before we get to phase four, which includes all the mass gatherings. Today, myself, Tracy, and Shelley, we sat down and we looked at the various events that are scheduled into the community center. And we're going, okay, so what are we going to do with those? Well, basically, we're going to tell them no, because the governor says the idea of, I think they consider a mass gathering to be anything over fifty people. Well, that rules out practically everything. So as we look at it, it's pretty harsh, but at the same time, our ability to kind of gear down those facilities and save costs on things is there. And that's why it's included in what we're talking about.
So can I, this is Shelley, can I address the comment about the fire department? And Chief Lopez can come in and tell me if you want. Part of the fire department program includes a state O E S truck. And when that state O E S truck goes out, we man that truck and we send our staff out on that truck. But the state pays for all the repairs and all the maintenance on that truck. And they reimburse us for all the staff on that truck and for an administrative cost on top of the staff. So hopefully not too many people from O E S that are listening, but we actually make a little bit of money to help cover not only the overtime for the folks that go out on the truck, but to help cover the overtime for the folks that stay at the station and maybe have to work extra shifts. So from a wildfire perspective, getting that O E S truck back up and running is advantageous for us on several fronts. First of all, the state takes care of all the costs of beating that truck, fix gas and running, and it pays for all the staffing on that truck. So in the case of a wildfire, we get reimbursed for that. Even like the rag fire, the ones that have been close to us in the past, we get reimbursed by O E S for that. So as far as putting it in the budget, it becomes somewhat of a wash because it shows in overtime in the fire department's budget, that it would show as additional revenue under reimbursement and refunds in the revenue side of things. And so as far as our ability to respond to wildfires and make sure that we're able to do that, we have the ability to do that without it negatively impacting the city budget.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. I do want to make a couple of comments. And first off, you know, we all know from doing this multiple times that what Shelley does here is basically pull her crystal ball out of her drawer and try to get a feel for what's going to happen over the next year. And, and I got to say, I'm pretty sure in all her years of doing this, her crystal balls never had to deal with a pandemic and the results of that. So there's a lot of things here that look really scary, but truthfully, they could get a lot worse. If this thing gets stretched out for the kind of time that John was mentioning earlier, we're going to lose a lot of businesses in town. We're already going to lose some. And that's why we got to work. And that's why we gotta work as hard as we can to help get people back up and running in the best fashion we can as soon as they can, or this is only gonna go from bad to worse. And another thing I wanted to bring up, and I think I know the answer, but we just need to hear it, is John and Shelley, because I know you're both watching this constantly, at this point, the federal government and the state government hasn't allocated a nickel that triples down as far as a city our size, but in the rare event that it actually did happen and we did get some kind of compensation to help us out, we would be able to inject that back into the budget and make adjustments if we were ever so fortunate as to receive anything from the state or the federal government. Is that not correct?
Yeah, no, I'll start and then Shelley can follow up. There's a reality, if you aren't in the first wave of funding, you're probably not there. They funded $2 trillion into their relief package, and we weren't on the list. A small city in their view was any city under half a million people. So everybody that's below that got nothing. If you follow anything, and, you know, I'm not gonna make any predictions about Washington, DC, but on one side, you've got some people who are saying that they wanna help local governments and the state. But on the Senate side, they said, nope, maybe cities and states need just to file bankruptcy. And we know that in this legislature and, you know, the way that they're looking at things, it doesn't look like they're gonna move. So what is, we take our approach, we're trying to basically fend off the idea of bankruptcy. Because in our case, we are amongst the very smallest jurisdictions. And I can tell you, in 2008, there wasn't any relief with the state of California. I can tell you, they are gonna pass some type of a continuing budget resolution on June 15th so that they can all still get paid. The state is saying that they are not really gonna put together a budget until August. And it sounds like they have burned through their entire rainy day plan, but they've also made a number of critical decisions that are impacting not only us, but them to even higher degree. What they did with sales tax is a major decision. That is money that comes across your counter into your checking account every single month. And the fact that the state gave a holiday the way that they did, it was almost unconscionable. I don't even know how they did it, but they did. And you can imagine that when they come back, the state is gonna take care of themselves. They will take care of themselves. In 2008 to 2010, they did, I think called the triple flip, and they exchanged property tax for sales tax. Are schools gonna be hurting? Absolutely, they are. Is the UC system gonna be hurting? I think with the fact that probably for the next year, they aren't gonna do any classes, I think higher education has got a major problem in how they're gonna fund what they do. Conversely, back to cities, my guess is that the state is gonna say that we have to fend for ourselves. And Shelley, I don't know, have you heard anything else?
I have not heard anything else. I do know that when they passed the Emergency Family EVAC and Women's Pacific League Act, they specifically left cities and local governments and state and counties out of the remedy. You know, when they passed that, they said that companies could take a credit against their employer taxes to help make up for that extra paid time off that their requires to get those back. They specifically left cities, counties, and the state out of that. So I have not heard anything positive as far as getting cash to cities to make up for revenue loss or, I mean, there's a few odds and ends of grants for small cities who are PPE, and there's a CBDC grant out there, but it's all really rupture for specific expenditures related to COVID. And luckily for us, our specific expenses related to the COVID-19 issue are very, very small. Our issue is on the revenue side where we just lost our revenues. Included in the slide that I had for you tonight is a comparison of what the city's sales tax looks like compared to the state.
You know, Shelley, let's go to that.
And so this shows the city's dependency on fuel and restaurants. And if you look at that, that is 8.6 restaurants and 36 is fuel stations, so that's 62% or 64%. 64% of our revenues come from, our sales tax revenue comes from gas and restaurants. But for all intents and purposes, our restaurants are closed, and our gas prices are going down, and there's a lot of people not driving out of town, they just work anymore, they're not driving out of town to go buy, to go buy all their consumer goods. So we lost a significant portion of our sales tax base. And when I talked with HBL and I got their predictions for the next five years, we are 20, we're predicting in 1920 to have 23% less sales tax revenue this year than we have last year. We don't show getting back to the 18, 19 receipt levels in sales tax until 2026, 2027. So it's gonna take six years to get back to where we were a year ago, because they're stuck to the fact that we're doing this low opening. Business, some businesses are just not going to recover. Fuel prices are still down, they don't know how long it'll take for that to recover. Who knows when they're gonna let the lakes and things open back up where people can drive through town and fill up their boats in their RVs before they head off to the area. So they're predicting that we're gonna look at the downturn in the sales tax, and realistically for 1920, that's $164,000 loss in sales tax from last year to this year. And then the next slide shows what the state of California's overall dependence on restaurants and fuel is. And if you look at that, it's like 22%. So we are much more heavily reliant on our restaurants and our fuel stations for economic health and wellbeing than the statewide totals are. So, you know, what I have talked to each, as we're talking to the employee groups, if we're asking them to make this discussion of 5%, what I am saying to them is, we'll come back and talk to you in February. We'll look at where the budget is. We don't, you know, again, we're, HBL and those guys are pretty close, right? I'm comfortable with some of their stuff, but we just don't know what impact this 4K reopening of the community is gonna be like. And so what we're saying is, we'll come back in February and we'll look at the budget. We'll look at the fire department's budget, we'll look at the police department's budget, we'll look at the wages for everybody. We will look and compare what we expect, what we expected to happen when we adopted the budget and what's actually happening. And we picked February to do that, because we don't get on top of these texts until the middle of late January from the county. So that holds us up on being able to say, okay, we're halfway through the year, we can do this. We just won't know until we get the first payment from the county. So we're committing to relook at the budget, we'll come back and we'll talk with you all. We'll let you know what the status of the budget is, whether revenues are coming in, where we help stay with you, are they higher or lower? And we'll have to make, we'll ask you to make some decisions at that point. I'm hoping that we'll ask you to make some positive decisions, but there could be that we're, we have to come back and ask, I mean, some more difficult decisions.
Yeah, you know, Shelley, one of the things that we might wanna stress are just some basic economics on a couple of things. First, Shelley pointed out the difference between the state's economy and the winner's economy. 22%, that's what the state gets from restaurants and hotels. We get 64%, which is different. So we are way, way out of balance when it comes to that part of the economic spectrum. But also, one of the biggest things about our sales tax is that, remember, we get almost three times less per capita sales tax than all of our surrounding jurisdictions. Most cities are getting 4,000, we get about 1,000 per capita in our sales tax. The drop in oil prices, great for everybody feeling up in the pump, not so great for winners, city hall, as far as money coming in on various things. So just the economics of how we look at a lot of these things. When the Economic Development Advisory Committee was looking at ways of diversifying our economy, what do we know? We know that business to business generates more sales tax than being just kind of a visitor-serving side. So, you know, this is where we're kind of getting into our detriment. And like I mentioned, we have to determine where the governor's gonna go. Our winters, even the hotel winters, if they can't throw a wedding there with 100 people, that's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I wanna make one more comment, and then I'm gonna go to Councilmember Lauren. Quite a few of the meetings I've been on lately with our assembly person and our senator, those have been set up by the League of California Cities. The League of California Cities has been getting a lot of pressure from people in the small cities and rural areas and stuff. And Councilmember Lauren's gonna be able to speak to this too, because she's our person for the league and on some of the boards and stuff. Cecilia Curry and Bill Dodd both mentioned the job that the league is doing to pressure them as much as possible to try to get a piece of the pie for the smaller jurisdictions from what the state is getting from the federal government. And whether or not they're successful, who knows? I'm not holding my breath, but maybe we'll get lucky. I know they're working real hard at it. Charles Anderson's doing everything he can from our region. And, you know, I know they're trying, and we'll see if they're able to be successful. But I know between Councilmember Lauren and myself, we're hitting every meeting they throw out there as much as possible to kind of cover all of this and to try to, you know, put our two cents in everywhere we can that we need to help just as much as San Francisco and Sacramento. But Jesse, you got some comments regarding the league and their efforts?
Yeah, the league, the league has been working very closely with the governor's office and also working with the Congress. I wanted to mention a letter that came out today. This is by Representative Nina Lowey, Chairman of the House Committee on Appropriations. She sent a letter today to congressional colleagues about the upcoming House Democrats' proposal for the next CARES Act that would create a fund for all cities. Here's the bad news. They would be, it would be awarded using a modified Community Development Block Grant System formula, and as you know, that 70% would be awarded directly to cities with a population of 50,000 and above. Again, that's 70% if it passes, goes to cities with a population of 50,000 and above. And the remaining 30% is kind of gonna be fought amongst, or fought for amongst the smaller cities based on population. So that puts us kind of at the back of the line with cities under 10,000. So even though the league is working hard for all cities, just some of the dynamics of the way the systems are already in place just disadvantage us at every turn. But the league is working hard to try to get money for cities. League's also working on, and Shelley can jump on this, I'm sure, in the first CARES go around, there was money for cities, and then they specified 500,000 and above. Well, there was a little bit left, and that went to the state, and the state and the League of California Cities is working on how to disperse that to cities in California, whatever's left out of that. So there's a lot of balls in the air on it. Not to change any other subject, moving away from the league, I just had some other comments. One was when City Manager Don Murphy was talking about the Economic Development EDAC Committee and all the work that they did, I think that we need some fresh eyes on looking at diversifying our portfolio. If we generally depend on restaurants and gas and all the oxygen has been sucked out of those two rooms because of COVID-19, I think anything should be on the table, including having conversations about cannabis industry. And also, I think, working again with the Solano Economic Development Group, I know that they're trying to bring more medical stuff that's like Genentech to the area, and we have a relationship with that group. I think it's just something that we need to be the squeaky wheel on. And none of that will satisfy the economics of what we are in this moment, but it can help us dig our way out sooner than seven years from now.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council before I open it up for any public comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think Chief Miller had some comment on something.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Sorry about that. So this, we'll after the fact now, but if you cross that document I was talking about, I want to share with you some of the numbers of our remaining operating budget, so you have a picture how much we, you know, what work we're doing here. After doing this austere budget, we have approximately 509,000 left in our operating maintenance budget. Of that, $250,000, forty-nine almost 50%, is for the Yolo Commercial Communications and CTECA, border dispatch and 911 services. $60,000 is for animal control services. $133,000, which is 26% of that overall budget, is for our obligations to the MBIC Center, which is for child abuse and sexual assault interviews, the high-tech crime unit, County Bomb Squad, Yolo County Special Investigations Unit. Simple things as water, electricity, and even our rental costs of our coffee machine. So that kind of gives you a snapshot of what's left in our budget. You know, I think we got 10% of the budget for, I said there's other things like routine vehicle maintenance, which we estimated $10,000. I'm sure fire departments in the effects and, you know, situation. But again, I just wanna give you kind of a snapshot of what's left and where it's going.
Okay, thank you, Chief. John, let's open it up for any public comments. Anybody got a hand up?
Two people, one is Bob Polkinghorn and the other is Sally Brown. So ladies first. We'll, I'm trying to unmute you, Sally. Okay, Sally, I think you're on.
Yay, thank you. Sally Brown, 24 East Main Street. I wanna actually make comments about two of the cuts that are happening. One is about the reduction in the city council library transfer of 25,000. I just wanna point that out, that that is not a reduction, that is a whole nother. So it's not that you're contributing to the library at all, you're actually eliminating all funding. You have an MLO agreement, commitment to the library for those funds. From our point of view, and as you know, I'm the past president of the Metro Spring Library, library services are an essential service in our community, it's not just an amenity. And as everybody is typing their bills, starting And as as everybody is typing their bills right now, we have a lot of folks who are unemployed and that might, you know, impact their ability to pay things such as internet access. They may library to search for new jobs when the economy opens up again. And so I really think it should reconsider that cut of twenty-five thousand. It's, you know, it's it's substantial, I understand, but in the big scheme of things, it's not that much money. And I just feel like we're having everything, the community center, the pool, the library. What's what's really left? I mean, I understand that we sit and fire it, you know, as a service, but we need something for the community and especially for our Hispanic families. They count on the library for for so many services. So that's my first comment. I appreciate you reconsidering that. And then the second is, I'm telling Shelley say that she was going to come back and talk to people in February and revisit. I I hope that you would also consider revisiting the pool. The twenty-twenty-one fiscal year doesn't just cover this summer, it covers the beginning of next summer as well. So at least come spring, I would love it if you guys could reconsider and at least see where you're at. And maybe not open it as early as you have some years, but at least for the kids and the general community, consider reopening the pool in May twenty-twenty-one so that the kids don't lose two years of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, we have Bob Polkinghorn, John?
Yeah, I'm muted and go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Polkinghorn? Hello, Mr. Polkinghorn. Yeah, I got him unmuted.
Mr. Polkinghorn, are you there?
Yeah, I I he's muted. So let me.
Is there anybody else with their hand up, John?
Yeah, you know, if Mr. Polkinghorn comes back, he can raise his hand again. How about, it says Abbey House Inn. They muted themselves. Oh, go ahead, Abbey House Inn.
Hello. Hello, this is Eric Cavanier.
Yes, how are you? Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to contribute kind of business perspective to the situation. And there's a lot of people in town who'd love to open up. And it's very clear, though, that what we what we could get important from you guys and our other elected representative is we're going to need some sort of assurance and protection from COVID lawsuits before people, you know. I just wanted to bring that up. That is something you could afford. That certainly would help business attempt, certainly protect us. And I'm sure that, as we say with the restaurants, hospitality is such a close proximity service. And, you know, we just we just don't need frivolous lawsuits. We're all familiar with, you know, other agendas. But we don't need attorneys looking for cases. Anyway, I wanted to bring that up. This is a specific item that would help, I think. And people would feel comfortable. The conditions surrounding operating as it is, for example, with restaurants being restricted, so much in the number of seating provided and the extreme restrictions on CDC for operating a hotel, those are very eye-opening and you'd find that it's certainly an achievable goal if you can rent a room for a thousand dollars a night. Because the cleaning level is off the charts. The 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 detail involves, I'd be happy to share the list with you sometime, but I'm on the check list. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, now Mr. Polkinghorn has his hand up again, so we made it in. Mr. Polkinghorn, are you there? Yeah, Mr. Polkinghorn. I've I've got Mr. Polkinghorn unmuted and.
He showed muted on my screen, John.
Can I make a comment while you're waiting for him?
There he is.
He went on for a second. There we go.
Are we on?
You are. Okay.
Okay, good. First, thank you very much for your patience there. I I appreciate it. Bob Polkinghorn, eight-four-two Walnut Lane. And I'm here to, first, thank you all very much for the hard work you're doing tonight and in the ensuing weeks and months as we try to confront with the implications of the COVID for our community and in all aspects of our community. I'm specifically interested in greater clarification and transparency concerning the litigation cost budget, which is two hundred fifty thousand dollars for this year and an anticipated building up to a million dollars. I'm not confident that I'm going to get a response to that based on the non-answer to a council member knew. But I still want to ask the council and the city manager to come forward at some point and explain to the citizens the use of two hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxpayer money. These are not private funds, these are public funds, and the public deserves an answer. That's the first point I want to make. The second point I want to make is that I cannot, for the life of me, understand any rationale for a million-dollar litigation cost budget. The only specific thing Mr. Don Levy said in responding to Councilmember Pierre was, almost word to word, if we're going to go down a path on various things, we'll go bankrupt. Now, I want to repeat that. If we're going to go down a path on various things, we're going to go bankrupt. I want to ask you as city councilmembers, if that's sufficient, if that rationale is sufficient to you to make a decision to cut people's salaries, to close, to not fund city physicians, to not fund fire and police decisions, and instead to put aside two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for four years in order to avoid going down a path on various things, that's disturbing to me. And it will be disturbing. I can only imagine that when one sets aside a million dollars in a litigation for litigation cost that they anticipate either being sued or suing somebody. So I've tried to think throughout the day since becoming aware of this item on the agenda. Who would the city sue and who would sue the city? So the only thing I can come up with is the city must feel that they might be sued by the state of California. And the state of California would sue them. Again, this is pure speculation because there's no transparency here. And just parenthetically, I believe Minister Don Levy, the one who two or three months ago had said, you wanted to establish a transparency website. So that's that's a little ironic. But my point is, is that the only possible reason I could imagine there being a lawsuit against the city winters is if it came from the state of California for perhaps failing to meet the RENA targets for low-income and very low-income categories. That target, by the way, is two hundred. I've done some figuring based on city documents that show that we have about a hundred fifty acres in in-city in-city property, eight hundred fifty acres in-city that would yield about a thousand housing units, of which two hundred could become low-income or very low-income, especially if we follow the path of greater density for low-income and very low-income. And the RENA standard for that is twenty to thirty units per acre. So it's clear to me that it's it's preposterous to me in some ways that with those numbers, we won't be able to meet the RENA numbers and therefore will be sued by the state of California. I'm not going to speculate anymore because it's obviously something that we're not being told. And as a member of this community and a leader of this initiative, and this initiative has been tied unaccountably to this litigation fund. It's in black and white in the agenda package that's been tied to this litigation fund. The public and the citizens who support our initiative deserve an answer. These are public dollars. And I know and you know that behind every dollar cut, that you talk to a real person who's going to suffer. And that's that's disturbing to me when we could not have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar allocation and mitigate some of that pain. Councilmember Lauren mentioned the EDAC report. The very first recommendation of the EDAC report was to hire somebody who could envision, and, as she said, look with fresh eyes on business development in cities. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars would go a long way for funding that position. So I'll leave it at that. But trust me, I'm not going to, nor will the city stand, the citizens stand by while we hear such things as going down a certain, a various path is going to bankrupt us. Therefore, we need to cut two hundred fifty thousand dollars away. So I'm I'm upset by that. I appreciate the work you're doing. It's all well-intentioned. And I don't envy your position. But when it comes to the lack of transparency, the lack of clarity on this issue, it's disturbing. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. John, it's.
Go ahead.
Before we before we move on, I I know our city attorney, Ethan Walsh, isn't with us tonight, but Irish Yang, I believe, is. Is there any chance that she could speak to to this at all about the contingency fund for, you know, for the litigation?
I I think Ethan has has mostly been the the person we've talked with. But just, you know, cities put together contingency funds for a variety of things. And I would just like to clarify is I I don't know where Mr. Polkinghorn got the the path comment. When we put together contingencies, we are looking to carry things out over a multi-year period. We are looking at the future as far as where our expenditures are going to be, how we put funds aside, and how we spend things. The path has to do everything with the city's budget and our financial planning. And as we look at how the city looks at our cash, at our reserves, it is very important that, and we try to stress, the importance of cash reserves and keeping money so that we can pay our bills. We have a very complete spending plan. And do we do an incremental funding funding and contingency for things? We do. It happens all the time. So I think we have one more hand, Mr. Fink.
Yes, hello. My name is Mark Fink. I'm the Yolo County County Librarian. And I just want to thank you for the difficult work that you're going through. And I understand some of the choices that have to be made. I will say that we've enjoyed really tremendous support from the residents of the City of Winters when it comes to their library. I will say that we do have a memorandum of understanding with the City of Winters and with the Winters Joint Unified School District. So, you know, part of that involves collaboration between the three organizations when it comes to making changes to that MOU. So I I just want to stress the importance of bringing the library into the conversation when it comes to looking at different funding choices about that affect the MOU. And I would just like to mention that, you know, if if the funding, if the city's contribution does get cut, there will be a reduction in service. We don't have that expect, we don't have that that complete plan in place yet. But I just want to let the city know that, you know, we will adjust our the hours of operation that we're able to provide based on the funding that's available. So I completely respect the city and the very difficult choices that you have to make. And I just hope that the library is not one of the areas where you choose to make the cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. If there isn't anybody else, John, I know Councilmember Lauren had a comment.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to mention for Eric Cavanier that during the meeting that I had on May fourth with Cal, the state and the League of California Cities, we had an extensive conversation about the service industries such as Airbnb and other types of stays. And I wanted to mention that there were a lot of questions that came from President John Dunbar. He's a league president, but he's also mayor of Yountville. And we have a lot of other places, regions that in in the League of California Cities that have a similar setup to having, you know, like your place of business, the Abbey House. And what I did, because I wasn't satisfied with the information on what has, what would be required for hospitality, I wrote I wrote a quick letter at the end to Melanie Perron. She is the person who collaborates with the state from the League of Cities. And I'm looking for specific guidance on a series of questions about the hotel business and cleaning and simplifying it.
I'm going to take a picture. I'm sorry, it looks like, but I'm not.
I do expect some sort of email information or call in the next day or two. And I will share that information with you as soon as I have it. I I understand where you're coming from and, you know, I I hope I can help you.
Thank you. Does anybody else that would like to comment about the budget here? Mayor Pro Tim Biazzi, go ahead. John, he needs to be unmuted.
I'm trying to unmute him right now. I'm trying. Ah, there you go.
Thank you. I know, you know, talking about the cuts on libraries. So the library is currently closed, so we're providing a certain amount. And similar to the community center and the pool, we don't know when they're going to be opening that up. I can see in the budget now there's a cut, but then I think, you know, coming back. And it may, maybe it will not be February when we look at it, maybe we look at it sooner to open that up. We can always look sooner. Those services, we have enough money there for the White House.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to comment or is there any other hands, John?
No other hands.
Okay, I don't think, I think this is just our first workshop on this. We're not making any firm decisions yet, right?
No, this will come back. Gosh, I'm I'm thinking that probably the first budget, the, let me ask Shelley. Shelley, when is this coming back?
Do we want to have another workshop or do we want to put together a budget and have the city council adopt it?
You know, I I guess throwing, you know, let's bring this back just as an information item at the the next council meeting, just so that we can keep the council in the loop on what we're hearing about various things. Obviously, the situation is so dynamic and who's going to be open, who's not going to be open.
Obviously, the situation is so dynamic, and who's going to be open, who's not going to be open is. Let's bring it back to the next council meeting. And just as an information, and for more input from the council.
We can do that because we still have to finish talking with the employee group to see what their decision is about our request for the wage reductions and concessions. We haven't settled that yet. We've made the proposal to the re-group. So far, we have three more to go. And then they all have to get back with us with whatever they get back with us with. So if we come back in two weeks, hopefully we'll have heard from all the groups, and maybe we'll have a better idea of where we're headed that way. And we'll see what the governor's deciding about opening and not opening and things like that. So I can bring it back as an information item with any updates that I might get between now and then.
Okay, councilmember Lauren, you have another comment?
Yeah, I. Yeah, I'll make this comment. With the reduction of 5% to staff, even though it really doesn't do much, I'd like to direct staff to include a 5% reduction for city council stipend. 5% of my $166 a month isn't a much. But I would, I want to be in the same boat with staff. And even if it's, you know, even if it's small, I would still want to be in the same boat. And I would like to see, you know, what that is, or at least have that available to the public.
Thank you. And a couple other things between, this is probably for John, for when we come back and have another discussion about this at the next meeting. I'd definitely like to have Ethan comment on the litigation fund, if we want to call it that. Because I know that was something that, you know, that he was involved with. And him being our city attorney, I'd like him to address that for us at the next meeting. I think that would be helpful for a lot of people. And I see this as just a heartbreaking thing for all of us, this budget and what we're looking at. Having to ask people to give up 5% of their current pay and not being able to hire the police officers, the firemen that we wanted to hire this year. And it's just sad to see that this much damage can be done in such a short period of time. And how soon we're able to recover and how soon we're able to get back to normal, it really comes down to how quickly we can get our businesses back up and running and safely. And I think what Eric brought up about possible litigation over COVID-19 is a legitimate concern as well. I think that's something that, I put that on my notes for the next time I talk to our Cecilia Curry, our assemblyman, and also to Bill Dodd, that maybe they could come up with some legislation that would, that'd help with some protections from frivolous lawsuits over, you know, somebody claiming that they caught COVID-19 at some business that recently reopened. I mean, I think that's a legitimate thing to look at, for the state to be looking at, to help protect all of us, the city included. So I know that's going to be on my list. And Jesse, I hope you put that on your list with the league as well. I think that's definitely a legitimate concern because we need to do all we can to help our businesses, most of which in winters are, you know, mom-and-pop, soap and pie under shit businesses. And we need to give them all the help we can to get up and running safely and as quickly as possible. If nobody has any comments on the budget workshop, then I think that brings us down to the city manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to kind of show you at least one of the numbers that I don't think is necessarily, we've never really brought up over the years. It's actually a big deal for some of us. And it's one of those hidden things where over the years, as we've looked for the way that the city and the staff have tried to come together to close gaps on various things. And one of the biggest numbers, and a number that we really don't talk a whole lot about, is this one. ECFT, just a contribution of the 457 match from employees. And in 2008, as everything was kind of crushing around us, we had many of the same issues of closing the pool and closing the community center and funding the library. And so what is this money that's there, the 62,000? There were a couple of us on the staff who basically gave back 7% of our compensation that we have never stopped giving. This is actually a donation back to the city's general fund. And that we donate back. And in the case of at least three of us, it's well over $300,000 that we have given over the years. For the four of us, it has to be past a half a million dollars right now. So the idea of trying to sacrifice for the benefit of the community has been actually a pretty big deal. And as we've kind of looked at the various ways that we fund, try to keep things alive, even with this, it kind of reflects the real uniqueness of this time. So for the council, I'm on a committee. I think probably my number one quest is trying to get our businesses open in downtown. And I'm on a committee with Yellow County that I asked, so who's going to decide when businesses can reopen in Yellow County? And they said, well, the health officer is going to do that. Well, where, who is giving the health officer the advice on this stuff? And they said, well, this committee. It's called the MAC. So I said, I want on the MAC because I want to do all I can to get winters and businesses open. And business reopening has been literally an obsession. I can tell you, over the past week, one of the things that the committee does is they write the guidance protocols. As you see, as they release businesses to reopen, they come with guidance and protocols. And over the past week, I have been writing the protocols for wineries and tasting rooms and for distilleries and for breweries and for barbering and cosmetology. Today I was on the call. We're talking about how to open up small retail businesses. And I will tell you that I've done business by business by business within our community to try and get them reopened. It's our number one priority. One of the things I was on the call today, I was literally over the entire weekend, Saturday and Sunday, I'm, we're writing all these protocols for this stuff, trying to get them in. One of the biggest reasons is that both restaurants and breweries and tasting rooms are considered a medium risk. The way that the governor's rolling a lot of this stuff out is for what they call their low risk. And if you look at the quote-unquote pathway that Yellow County is describing things, they go phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, following the way that the governor talks about things. But then the speed of rollout is they, in each phase, there are various businesses that are listed as low risk, medium risk, and high risk. And I will tell you that for winters businesses, and as I've been writing the protocols to try and influence the process, I have been trying to pull, most of our businesses, for some reason, fall into a medium risk. And what I've been trying to do is pull those businesses down into low risk so that on Friday, when the governor says phase two starts, low-risk businesses can open, they can open. And I want to share one point about our businesses in winters. I've been talking with all of them constantly. I've been sending out my draft protocols, hey, what do you think of this? And everybody, Berriessa, Gap Berriessa Brewing, Turkovich, Palio 29, some of the small retailers, they are amazing. And one thing that I wanted to spell that is out there is the notion that any one of these businesses is some type of a cowboy or wildcat in anything because they are, every single one of them. The first thing that they bring up is safety for their employees and for their customers. Absolutely amazing. So I will tell you that before I leave tonight, I'm going to finish up the last protocols that I've been working on that I got to get in. On Thursday, hopefully, I'm going to try and maybe schedule another business roundtable meeting with our businesses to try and update them on things. But there's a very good chance that some of these businesses could be green-lighted as early as Friday. So waiting to see those things out, but please stay tuned on that. Last week, the mayor, or the mayor mentioned that last week we were dealing with chromium 6. I can tell you that part of what I was also dealing with was we're going to be drafting a comment letter. The mayor did a really good job of presenting our case before the workshop on chromium 6. We're going to get a comment letter in. I can tell you that the city, we are participating in a more complex white paper that they are preparing on chromium 6. So just a heads up on absolutely all of that. Lots of stuff regarding both of those topics. And quite frankly, it's given us something to do around here. But anyway, that's my city manager's report.
Okay, thank you. We're going to close the meeting tonight here at 8:32 in honor of Eleanor's 100th birthday, also known as Rose, and Askey Birthday. We're done. Thank you all.
Okay.
I just, so when you saw me holding up, I just got a text from my kid.
Oh, no, that's okay.
There's this virtual graduation that's going to be held nationwide.
Oh, my gosh.
A commencement speaker, President Obama, Michelle Obama, Lady Gaga, Condoleezza Rice.
Wow, all the heavy hitters.